Okay, there it goes. All those animals we talked about, those were basically phylogene. There are more phylogenes than I talked about than the ones I talked about. I'm not gonna worry about it. No? On the, on this special talk, I mean on the, on the topics. Pay attention, main topics. Yeah, main topic, I tell you.
These are these are some.
I have the answers to most of them.
If it says main topic.
So kind of yes.
And on the animals, I talked about mammals. The differences in three different kinds of mammal mammals.
Yeah, it's the study guide with most of the answers. There's only like a few in the back. Let's get down to business, damn it. Oh, gotcha. You want me to send you a copy of that?
Alright, so we're gonna do it now.
I, I, I gotta, I gotta, I gotta get one question in. What is duplication as regards to, to chromosomes?
Oh. Very quickly, very quickly.
Cause that is what we're talking about, right?
At that particular point in the lecture. Trying to give you ideas of how big changes can occur. Big changes can occur. And the idea was that every so often, um, you know, like in, let's say you're forming a sperm or an egg. You're forming again.
Uh huh.
And you have those homologous chromosomes join together and they're supposed to, they're supposed to split. Every so often, they don't split and the whole thing will go to one side. So you'd have a whole extra.
Is that what the duplication is?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, and that's part of, um, mutation?
Well, it comes under that kind of same category of how large change.
I, I, I'm just going over, looking at that video.
To be honest, I won't ask you anything about that duplication stuff, but just, I'm just, you did ask what I want to tell you.
Okay.
You know, and, cause more, we were talking more about how you can get smaller changes, you know?
Yes.
But that can cause a big change.
Yeah. And, and have the empty space on the other side when the whole tetrag goes to one side. Okay, that's what that is, okay.
Big change, okay.
Even if it's not on test, I wanted to know that.
I was wondering, I was trying to go through my study guide.
Okay.
Do you think over why Lamarck's idea of evolution can't work?
Good, good, good question. Lamarck, so what, so let's, let's review Lamarck. Okay, so his ideas, his ideas were that the, the inheritance.
Acquired traits.
Acquired characteristics, acquired traits. So you really work hard playing the piano, you know, then your kids are gonna be good piano players. Now, the example they used with the, the, the giraffes was, you know, they stretch to reach the higher leaves. And as they stretch, you know, then those stretched necks got, you know, passed on to their offspring. Now, we know that doesn't work. Why not? We know, cause he didn't know anything about genetics. So what does get passed on? To your offspring? Genes, right? Genes get trans, genes get transferred to the offspring. So, so acquire, inheritance, acquired traits. But, um, uh, acquired traits. I'm gonna write this down, so it makes sense. Acquired traits can't affect your DNA, don't affect your DNA. So can't be passed.
Was that kinda with the metaphor about not reinventing the wheel or something?
Well, we'll come back with, with respect to cultural evolution.
Oh yeah, okay, that's what, yeah.
Alright, we'll come back to that, that's a good question. Okay, does, does that make sense?
Yeah.
So, so can, so, I mean, it sounded good, I mean, you know, they didn't know anything about genetics. I'm not knocking Lamarck, he didn't intend the right mechanism of organic evolution. You know, Darwin didn't know anything about genetics either, but he did come up with the right mechanism. But anyway, um, and, and the other thing, of course, is that, you know, it's not affecting DNA specifically. It can affect the DNA in the eggs or the sperm. You can get even more things. So therefore, you definitely can't pass it off to your offspring. But, and Steve just mentioned that, and this is a good question, cause it sounded, and, and, and. Cultural evolution, what do we mean by cultural evolution? And we're really talking about cultural evolution mainly with humans. And I'm not saying it doesn't occur in other animals, it's just in humans. It is so predominant, um, whereas in other animals, it's mild little things that are passed on. Go ahead, I didn't mean to cut you off, Iris, go ahead. Well, yes, I mean, you say technology, but, but the point is that it's just. Anything learned in this generation can be passed on to the next generation directly. Because we can communicate, we can show them, we can, you know, whatever. You know, we have such a good way of, of transmitting information now. And so, so cultural evolution would be passing on, passing on, um. Acquired, acquired knowledge, we'll use the word knowledge, but knowledge including technology and everything in this case. Passing on acquired, I mean, this could be everything from, you know, how to make a. How to make a better sword, how to make a bow and arrow, how to make a gun, and how, you know, I mean, how to make a better, uh.
Almond.
Hook almond, how to make a better almond, you know, a better hook to catch fish. I mean, anything, it doesn't have to be weapons, it could be, you know, something that allows you to survive in your particular environment. That's an acquired knowledge from one generation to another. And what did we say about the method here? Is it more like Darwinian evolution or Darwinian, uh, or is it more, or is it more like Lamarckian?
This is my Lamarckian, yeah.
And it's very fast. It's very fast, because, you know, it's not having to reinvent the wheel, as I said. You know, you, you, you don't have to redo something, you just have, you can take what's been done already and improve on it. So this is what, this is actually, so I'll say this occurs. By Lamarckian methods. And is very fast, very rapid. Whereas organic evolution is incredibly slow. So this is, now, now remember, I talked about the idea of the great leap forward. This is someone's idea, uh, you know, of what may have happened. Because, you know, if you look in the archaeological record and everything, there seems to be a giant change from, uh, you know, starting somewhere around thirty eight, forty thousand years ago or something like that. And, you know, this one person's idea is what the change was, was some change. We can't document in the fossil record, maybe they might, some, they might be able to. But, uh, maybe some change in the vocal apparatus to allow us to speak much more clearly than just the thing we get from our teenagers. Kidding, just kidding, anyway.
No, you're not. He lies.
No, but the point is, by, by being able to communicate, you know, with this abstract language and, and. You know, you, you can pass on acquired knowledge so easily. And, and it seems like the last, say thirty five, forty thousand years, there's been a lot more rapid cultural evolution than in the previous two hundred thousand years. Modern humans. And modern humans have been around, you know, they roughly estimate two hundred fifty thousand years or something like that. So, I mean, and, and if you just take the last couple of hundred years, the amount of changes. So cultural evolution is a big thing. Okay, does that make sense to you guys?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, so I list.
Does that include technology and cultural evolution?
Oh, yeah, 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 definitely, I would, yeah.
Why use the technology back?
Because that's acquired knowledge, you know, how to make some tools. And, you know, we talked about the industrial revolution, but the industrial revolution's a big deal, because you're suddenly able to have machines doing.
Humans.
You know, physical labor that, that humans used to do, so it frees up humans to do other things. Like war. No, no, I don't mean that, no, but anyway. Alright, so go ahead, go ahead with the questions.
Oh, um.
Haley, I see a hand.
Um, what would have been the early food sources of?
Oh, the early, I'm sorry.
Early food sources of, uh.
Oh, oh, like early, early cells?
Yeah.
Minerals.
Here's the ideal of that, that's a good question. You know, we, we, we can't go back and look at the DVD of how life formed, you know? But what we think happened is that, you know, there was this, all kinds of organic molecules probably were forming because of all the different energy sources and all the different, uh, conditions of the early earth. And so, they often use that word, the primordial soup. And you can't go down the same way and buy primordial soup. But, but the point being that, that, you know, if you figure that in the oceans and the rivers and, you know, and the lakes and all that, there was a, there were a lot of organic molecules, different kinds of organic molecules there. Different kinds of energy sources, and some of those were getting together to form various kinds of molecules. Remember, I even mentioned the idea of clay, a lot of people think clay is very important, because some of those molecules stick to clay and would form kind of a, something to hold on to, and then, anyway. Somehow, reproducing kinds of organisms came about. Okay, so let's just say we start with some primitive cells, which can reproduce. What are they eating? That's really the question here. They're eating each other, they're eating.
Minerals.
They're eating the other, you know, other, other molecules in the primordial soup. Primordial ooze.
Would, would that be like amino acids, like you were talking?
Could there be amino acids, because you remember, we said it's not that hard to form.
Form amino acids, and that was what I was thinking.
Or, you know, sugars and everything else. Okay, but, but, but now, what's the next part? You, pretty soon, you, you know, as conditions are changing where you're not forming all these new things so much, you're gonna run out of food sources pretty soon. So what, is there another question right after that?
Well, it was, it was the.
Well, they'll eat each other, pretty soon, there'll be one last guy.
Life back then was composed of bacteria that formed in a system for a long time, what would have been there?
Well, that's, that's what we're saying, you know, they're eat each other. And the, any, any of the substances in the, what we call, I like, I like the word.
Primordial ooze, we'll, we'll just put substance.
But what's the next part, is there another part of the question there?
What is the significance?
Ah, say it out loud, what is the, what's that S word? Significance! Ah, early photosynthesis. What is the significance of early photosynthesis?
Because they learn to be autotrophs.
Suddenly you can make new food out of CO2 and water. Right, does that make sense? I couldn't tell what that was, Michael made that noise, I'm sorry. Just kidding. So, so suddenly, with photosynthesis, when some early bacteria somehow, you know, and some of the pigments that they made, probably already making, somehow got connected to the, you know. A system that allows them to actually track energy from the sun to make food. Then you have new food source. So you're not gonna just eat up the primordial ooze and eventually run out of food, you can make some new food. Does that make sense? So that's why, so photo, so that's why photosynthesis is such a big deal. Because suddenly you can make food from inorganic materials, CO2, water. Okay? Does that make sense why it's a big deal? Haley, you're still kind of. Otherwise, you're gonna run out of food. You have to have some way to keep making new food if you're gonna keep on having life continue, otherwise, it's gonna, you know, eat up all the food and it's gone, that's it, it's over. Shut the door the same way, there's no more food. Yeah.
Photosynthesis and then also like, well. Well, weren't there organisms before?
Well, yeah, yeah.
But they start to eat each other.
But I mean, even still, the point, the point I'm trying to make is that photosynthesis is so critical. Because then you can start, especially on the surface here, there, that you can start making new food sources and, and, I mean, new food. Uh, because, you know, without using inorganic, you're not just using up the, all the stuff that's been made by chance, you know? Silas, you on, go ahead.
What were some of the consequences for the great leap forward?
Of?
The great leap forward?
Okay, well, let, let me, I'll come right back to that, just one second, I wanna finish kind of the previous thing. And so, now, the early photosynthesis probably did not produce oxygen. But then some of the others probably did start producing oxygen. So what was, what's the significance of? Fruit producing oxygen? And, you know, those guys were the ones that, there, those, those were the, the development of the blue greens, right, the blue greens? So what's the significance of oxygen?
Well, more organisms could be formed because they require oxygen.
What's that term called, requiring oxygen? They have aerobic mechanisms to suddenly be, if, if anybody by chance happened to, uh, have some way to use oxygen as an electronic scepter. It's a real strong electronic scepter, which means you can get a lot more energy out of this, out of some substances. When you break down something, could be amino acid, could be a sugar, but if you break it down and you're doing an aerobic process to break it down, you'll break it down further and get more energy out of it. So, shortening that, we'll say the significance of oxygen is that aerobic, aerobic metabolism. It allows aerobic metabolism, which allows more energy to be trapped and used, you know, by the, by the organism. And now it's all nice and refined, and we're talking about mitochondria, and for one glucose, you get how many ATP? Thirty six. Whereas, if, if you're breaking down all the way, using aerobic processes, how many ATP did you get if you just did it by fermentation?
Two.
Two! So, I mean, it's a big difference, so, so the significance of oxygen then. Photosynthesis is giving up oxy- oxygen as a way to, is, would allow aerobic, uh, processes, which are a lot more energy efficient. When you can get more energy out of breaking down something. Homennins, those are the precursors to humans, but I'm not gonna ask that question. Oh, but, but wait, now let's go back to your question, wait, you had the question about the great leap forward. So, say again, so, I'm not gonna ask you about homennins.
Homennins?
Homennin, no, 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 no. Um, isn't that, isn't that the little white thing that you eat in food, it's just a.
Hominin, hominy, yeah.
Well, hominy, that's it, I'm teasing, teasing you guys. Okay, so, um, great leap forward, so what do we say that's the thing happened, I mean, this is the one person's idea. Change, change in the vocal structure to allow speaking. Because look at the gorillas and the chimps, they look just like us, they've got all the same structures, but the big difference is something's different about their vocal structure. They can't make sound, they, they could try, they just can't. So, if you can make, if you can change that vocal structure to allow speech. Then you can get this, if you have the ability, the ability with your brain, and our brain does have that ability to make this incredibly abstract, complicated language. We, we can communicate in this very complicated way. So it allows. History and passing on, easily passing on acquired knowledge to certain species.
That would be a good function.
Yes! Yeah. I mean, I don't, I can't remember, if you wanna get really technical about some of the nasty consequences that has to do with development of that, if you could choke. Most animals don't choke, I think, you know, but it has to do with the way our vocal apparatus and respiratory system developed, but I don't wanna get into all that. Yes! Choke on food is what I'm talking about, but. Yes.
So what was the significance of the new greenhouse?
Well, so that's what we're just talking about, what do they give off?
Oxygen, or, or.
They give off oxygen when they photosynthesize. See, there are bacteria that photosynthesize that don't give off oxygen. But once, once the blue greens developed and they were giving up oxygen and the amount of oxygen went up, and eventually, some organisms came up with some aerobic methods of metabolism. Silas?
I don't wanna go off on the TNT, but when the earth goes like most of CO2 and that's when they're picking up oxygen before the.
Well, well, wait, you see, I don't know if like most of CO2 is probably a combination of CO2 and, you know, maybe some methane, maybe nitrogen, maybe, you know, all kinds of things.
So you're saying the oxygen.
Depends on what period. There is, depends on what is most of the.
Before that, there wasn't. The CO2 isn't as good, the oxygen isn't as.
Well, well, I mean, the, the, it's not the CO2, it's just that the other methods of breaking down things are more fermentation kinds of things.
Which don't produce enough energy.
Which don't get, exactly. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, you got it. Cool, what else? Did you, did you, did I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Well, go ahead.
The theory of origin of viruses?
Oh, I didn't talk, talk, I did talk about that, but I did, I didn't put that in the exam. Has to do with those jumping genes, those transposons and, you know, that's not what we talk about.
Oh, you spoke.
Something about the origin of viruses, I, I think I asked you a question about viruses. What was that section in, I did ask you something about viruses, what did I ask you?
Why are viruses not actually?
No, no, I, I think I asked you something about, I can't remember what I asked you about.
They do not re- respirate or reproduce.
Hang on, let me see.
They are not living.
I think I just asked you something about the way they're made, you know? Nucleic acids surrounded by protein and some have an envelope or, I think I may have asked you something about that. And something about, oh, I know, what about, so here's the other question, I think I did ask something like this. If they're not even alive, they're not even cells and all that. And yet, they want to reproduce, quotes, you know, that's what DNA wants to do, is reproduce, or let's say nucleic acid. And that's what these guys are made of, nucleic acids surrounded by protein. They wanna reproduce, and yet they're not cellular, how in the heck are they gonna reproduce? And they, they invade a cell. And they provide the information by means of that nucleic acid, tell the cell to do what? To make new viruses, tells them how to make new viral DNA or RNA, tells them how to make new. Proteins, and just keep in mind that, that the virus has no work, what's work, it's, it's all the cell that does the work.
Just gives the orders.
And I told you, it's not because the cell wants to, it doesn't have any choice, this information comes in and just says, hey, do this, you know? So it does it, it makes new viruses. So that's why I, I sometimes liken a virus to a, you know, guerrilla warfare. Gorillas come in and take over a truck factory and turn it into a, maybe a factory that makes a, a set of trucks, maybe tanks or something like that, or anyways. But, but did, did you have another?
Oh, no, I was just saying. It's like Star Wars, when R2 shuts down all the truck compactors.
Welcome back, welcome back, Silas, you had a question earlier.
Oh, no, I have several, but I, um, okay. They're labeled, uh, somewhere. I hope, okay, here it is. Basically, I kinda wanted to ask what, to reach, maybe, I don't know if we should go and order these. I wanted to maybe go over how we, I mean, I could probably do it by looking at a video, but I wanted to go over the pedigree again to make sure I had it.
Oh, okay, 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 pedigree, yeah.
Yeah.
That's a good idea, cause I am putting a pedigree on. And, um, yeah, I'll, I'll maybe give you a little bit of ideas of what the pedigree. By the way, we did Lamarck before, I'm already gonna erase it now, but what's, what's, make sure you can say something about Darwin's idea of organic evolution and natural selection.
I was gonna ask you about.
Those words, differential reproductive success and.
I was gonna ask you about, that's still coming up.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
They're in order, like, these, these questions are broken down and numbered, so.
Anyway, what's the pedigree? The idea on the pedigree that I'm gonna ask you is to take a look at the pedigree and think about what it is. So this is not the same, exactly the same kind of thing I asked you before. Whether the trait, and I'm not even saying what the trait is, I'm just saying who's affected and who isn't affected. Is it the dominant trait or recessive trait? And then, how can you tell by looking at the information?
Oh, that, see, that's why I kinda wanna go over.
So, remember that, that circle means female.
Square.
Square means male. If they have offspring, then you, you know, you can do it like this. So that just means offspring, and they could be maybe males, females, whatever they might be, okay? And whatever the trait is you're talking about, if they are showing the condition, if they're showing the condition, then you, you, you know, put that in like that. And if you don't fill it in, then it would be, uh, they're, they don't show it, that doesn't mean they can't be a carrier. They'll still be a carrier, but they don't have the condition. So keep in mind, as you know from all these things, that if it's, now, and I, and I'm not doing sex, uh, you know, it's not gonna be sex linked, I'm just gonna be honest.
I was wondering about that specific.
Because if it's possibly sex linked, of course, that makes it a little bit different, and you have to think in a little bit.
That means it comes from the X.
We're just talking autosomal. Autosomal, um, and it could be dominant. Or it could be autosomal recessive. But, and what's the difference in terms of what genes you have or alleles? Which ones you have to, to express the trait, to show the trait phenotypically, what's the deal? So autosomal dominant. Only need.
One.
One gene. To have, show the trait. Whereas recessive, you need two genes, two recessive genes. To show the trait. So if you just, as long as you know this, and this is, you know, relatively straightforward idea, as long as you know that. Whatever the, I, I'm just, I just put something down here, but you can follow this down, well, for example, let, this is stuff for here, just one second, before I get to your question. What if I just gave you this, that's all I gave you and said, okay, this person has some trait, and then we're assuming it's not a mutation, she said. Doc, you know, we're not, we're just assuming it's this trait or this thing. What would you say, is this, is this person, is this, would it be a dominant or recessive? And, and, and why did you come up with that? Because what?
She showed the trait.
Well, she shows it, but she's still, it could be recessive trait.
But I thought you said.
So, so, so.
That means each of the parents is heterozygous, I guess.
Yeah, at, at that point, yeah, there's, neither of them are showing.
If, if she had it, but her parents didn't have it.
They're carriers.
Then, then, then they would have a carrier.
They have to both.
Can't be a carrier if it's dominant, if it's dominant, you can't be a carrier, you have it.
Express it. Okay, so that just totally helps.
Let's just make up a letter, uh, we want Q, so, if, if, if this person is big Q, little Q, little Q. And this person is big Q, little Q, then this person could have inherited little Q, little Q, whoops.
Yeah, I can.
Little Q, and then they, they have it.
What would it be, big Q, big Q?
But if they had big Q, big Q.
Then.
But see, if Q, if Q, if Q was, if it was a dominant trait, if Q caused you to have the condition, they'd have the condition and they don't have it.
See, that condition is curly hair, only the kid has curly hair, the parents both don't, but they are carriers.
So you, so if you.
So it's the both are recessive.
But this just makes sense, so that, so that, because if it was, if, if big Q caused the problem, whatever the problem was, they'd have the problem.
And they'd be shamed.
And they don't have it.
So, but you still wouldn't know what they are to each other, they would either be.
Well, okay, yeah, you're right, you don't, you don't know what they're, well.
They would either be big Q, little Q, or big Q.
Right, they, they could be big Q, big Q, or they could be big Q, little Q, yes, you're absolutely right, you don't know. So that would mean, so if it was just something like this, you'd say, hey, this is an autosomal, uh, recessive. If we did something like, let's say we do something else, just right now. They don't have, they don't have to have three kids, they get two kids, they don't have to have three kids, yeah. Not counting. So what if this person had it? What if this person had it, and this person had it, and neither of their kids had it?
They're both recessive.
They're both adopted, that's right, or that's not really the dad. Or not gonna dead any of this or anything, or just, no, no, assuming everything is straight. What if it was something like that? Or maybe, we could say, hey, maybe, maybe this person had it, but this person doesn't, or something like that, we'll just do it like that.
They're, they're, they're both, uh.
Then it would have, then you'd say, hey, that looks like it shouldn't be dominant, because all you need is one of them, let's, let's just use it, I don't like Q, that's very cute, that's great.
Let's go with P or S or?
S, okay, S, so if, if you think it's autosomal dominant, then you can say. S, okay, S, so if, if you think it's autosomal dominant, then you can say, let's put big S, little s for this person, big S, little s for this person. What about this person? They'd, they'd be little s, little s, and they wouldn't have the trait, because it's a dominant trait, so we say, this is. This is, if, if we're assuming this is autosomal. Dominant, you just need one, the one big gene to, to get it. And so both of those parents would have it, this person down here could either be big S, big S, or big S, little s, whatever, they've got it, they don't know which one. But this person doesn't have it, cuz they got the recessive good G. Does that make sense, Rachel?
No, because in the last one, you said that he got it because he was too little.
Yeah, but, but in this case, it's recessive, and, and the recessive caused the problem. Okay, whereas here, the dominant one caused the problem. Okay, does that make sense? I mean, in this case, the dominant's the bad guy. In this case, the recessive's the bad guy. I mean, you had, think of it that way. But keep in mind that if it's, if it's a dominant trait, all you need is one gene to get it. Uh, and so, we, this guy could have both, bad guy genes or one bad guy, one okay gene, but he still has it, cuz it's dominant. That make sense?
A little bit, yeah.
Think about it, and if you're not sure, you know, try, try it, and then send me an email if you wanna ask a question, that's fine with me. But anyway, so, but, so there is a question, to be honest, is, the, the question on a pedigree is, look at the pedigree. And determine if you think it is an autosomal dominant or an autosomal recessive, and just go through these kinds of ideas. And you, if you're not sure, try it out, let's see, let me try with two big Qs, and, you know, you know, try whatever you want and see what makes sense. And I ask you what, to give me the answer, whatever it is, and tell me why, and tell me why, because of. Who ha- who's showing it and what they must have in order to, what they must have inherited, what they might pass on, you know, that kind of thing. Okay, I'm gonna get a million years ago here, yes.
What is the relationship of fungi and majority of seed plants?
Oh. Fungi and the majority of.
Seed plants.
Seed plants, I don't remember asking that question, it's not on the test like that.
Where is that?
What was, oh, oh, I know what, the reason for that was, I think the reason for that question was. Yeah, I'm not gonna ask that question. They have no walls? You know, fungi don't have.
Or is euk- I'm just, is eukaryota, uh, plural for eukaryotic?
Yeah, yeah, the, you know, I, I tend to use the, just the general term for these things, and I say eukaryotic cells or something. But when you, when they do like the kingdoms or, or the domains or something. They make it fancy, so like for, for kingdom, I'll say plants, but. Properly is planti, P A L N T I E, animalia for animals.
Mamalia or.
Just make it easy, you know, so, yeah, so eukaryota is, is the way they would put that domain. And I'd just say eukaryotic cells or something. Wait, wait, Steve had a question.
Uh, I was, uh, I wanted to go over the Darwin's explanations about the mechanism for evolution.
Yeah, yeah.
I was gonna ask, I, I read, I came up with like, so, can we just scratch off this last paragraph about the?
Yeah, yeah, except for the one about the, the, the three types of mammals, keep that, keep the three types of mammals, that's on that, that's on the thing saying.
That's probably one of the questions I have too.
Theory of natural selection. I'm not gonna ask you about this inventory. But, yes, that's why I didn't, I didn't ask, okay, so what's the deal on, on? Natural, so, and you know, by the way, this is, what's interesting is, taking Darwin's ideas of natural selection. You can use that in terms of what works and all kinds of things, doesn't even have to be organic evolution, you can, they, they use those basic ideas, not with respect to. DNA and all that, but I mean, in terms of. Origin of planets and everything else, you know, what, 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 what works, keeps going and, you know. Anyway, so it's kinda interesting, but what do we have, what do we need to do here, what's, what's the big deal? And you can do it in terms of long-necked giraffes, what's the basic idea? Okay, survival of the most, or we'll say the more fit, I like the more fit rather than fit, but. Cuz it, it sounds like they're the best, but you know, since we're the more fit, and you know, the thing is. Natural selection does not make a perfect organism, you know, it's all, it's, it's.
It makes a passable one.
Working on those organisms and the var- variation environment and what, what is surviving. But it, it's, it does make organisms that are more fit for their environment, the environment changes, they may not be fitted. So it's not like the, it, it fashions a perfect organism, that's something I'd be careful about. Uh, it'd be nice to think of us as the act of evolution. A little bit, uh, a little bit questionable here. Yeah, ask any other organism, they're gonna question that. So, but so, but what, what's the idea, first of all, wha- what is there a lot of in the gene pool? Variations, so there's a lot of variation. And remember, I, I've said many times when we're talking about other, this idea that. There's a lot of variation in the gene pool, or in the, in the population, let's do the population. You know, they worry when they get something like I mentioned to you, the cheepers, there's not very much variation in the genetics, and they worry that something could happen, wipe all the cheepers out. Maybe not enough variation to, to, to withstand some big insult, okay, there's a lot of variation in the population. And, and, and some of this variation makes individuals. A little more fit for their environment, a little more successful in their environment, um. Some of this variation. Well, um, let's just do this, before I do this, but just a second, I don't really care, you don't have to do it in terms of one, two, three, four, the way I'm gonna do it. I wanna put one other thing, part number one, there's a lot of variation in the population, and, um. This variation is inheritable. You could say inheritable if you want to put the N, but we don't need to, you can say inheritable, it's something inherent. Okay, there's a lot of variation in the population, and. And this variation is her, okay, now, some of the various, some, some of. The variation. Makes, uh. The individuals. What did we just say, more? Their environment.
So the variation isn't.
I'm sorry, say again?
The variation isn't inheritable.
No, 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 I mean, let's say that i- if you happen to have a variation here, you're a giraffe. And you happen to have the variation that allowed you to make a little longer neck, you can reach the higher leaves and maybe have a better food supply than the shorter neck. And that, and, and the reason you had the longer neck was not because you stretched it, but because you actually inherited some genes that. Allowed the, the little long, a little more growth, just in the same way that, you know, some people are left to all this and other. Okay, so some of the variation makes the individuals more fit for their environment. And these individuals therefore. Survive, and what's the important word, reproduce. And these. Individuals, and I'm gonna say preferentially. Cuz, you know, it's not like, hey, only these live and the others don't, I mean, it's not, it's not that obvious, since we're talking about other generations, but. But, and these individuals preferentially su- survive. Or maybe survive in higher numbers, you could say it that way, however you wanna say it, I'm just trying to. Make it a little stronger than necessary, preferentially survive. And reproduce. Okay. And then, you know, therefore their, their offspring inherit. Those, the very, the, those genes, the variation that they inherit, the genes for the variation that allows them to survive. Uh, and so that, you know, so, so the numbers of those. How do you wanna say it, the, uh, uh, amount of those, those genes in the gene pool increase over time. Remember, we said that's the simple definition of evolution, it's an increase in the, you know, certain genes over time, in the gene pool. So some of the variation makes individuals more fit for their environment, and these individuals preferentially survive, reproduce, the offspring. Offspring. The preferential genes, or the, or we're calling the morphic genes. Also, and then, and then they survive in the years. And so eventually, you know, eventually.
They become dominant in the gene pool.
That they become. Yeah, I, 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 I have to carry these words dominant, oh, because of using the word dominant recessive, we like to confuse the. We'll just say that, 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 those, those morphic genes become more prevalent in the, in the genes. I'll just say increase. In the gene pool. And if there's a, you know, again, if there's enough change, then it'd be, over enough time, then, then they might become. New species, that's always a possibility, but here, we're just talking about just increasing in terms of just the numbers of. Now, what are the words that are said to pay attention to? Cause you're giving us the definition, not the words you want us to remember, so. Well, okay, different, what, differential. Reproductive success, that was one of them. So, yeah, so some of the variation makes individuals more fit for their environment, and these individuals preferentially reproduce and. Survive, so this is, this is, this would be differential. Reproductive. Success. Now, differential just means there's a difference, there's a difference in, you know, who's surviving and who isn't surviving. And, and, and who's reproducing, it's actually reproductive success, there's a difference in, you know, who's able to reproduce and who isn't. And if individuals die off before they have a chance to reproduce, then they're not gonna be passing on their genes, if they are able to survive for a longer period of time. Therefore, uh, uh, being able to reproduce and pass on some genes, then they are, they are, uh, you know, they will. Be producing at higher levels, so that's what I mean by the differential reproductive success, better. Success, reproductive success for those individuals with the quote morphic genes. What was the other term? Descent with modification, and so, so, so here, so the, thus these morphic genes increase in the gene pools, or really saying, that's really. What that is, is descent with modification, that we're having change over generations, uh, of. These traits, because of the genes are increasing in the gene pool, so this would be essentially the same thing as descent with modification. Slow process.
So that's the end of it, is descent with modification.
One way I've written it today, I wrote it a little bit differently in the class. If you ask me any one day, I'd write it a little different, it's all the same. Descent with modification, that's a slow, this is a very slow process, probably, you know, hundreds of thousands of years, as opposed to. Cultural evolution that we've been drawing out recently, and we've just said that from the last, think of the last twenty years, well, look at the change there's been in. Electronics, yeah, yeah, that's.
Um, I was wondering if, um, for the use of O two type bacteria and other animals. Um, I was wondering if you need to know everything like obligate arrow.
Yeah, actually, I did kinda want you to think about. That's a good point, let's just talk about this real quickly, first of all, before we get there, anything else on this, you want, are we okay on this?
No, that's basically Darwin's theory of natural selection, the right words.
So let's talk about this, cuz I did ask a question about what you're saying, and let me tell you why I'm asking that question. I, I, I'm, partly I want you to keep in mind that bacteria. I mean, I use it, I, you know, my little mantra in my microclass, bacteria rule, I don't care that you think of bacteria ruling. So all that really means when I use that term is that there are bacteria everywhere, you name the environment, you name the niche, that you name the habitat, there are some bacteria there. Um, are eukaryotic organisms in every possible niche, ah, no, you know, so I just want you to realize how. Successful all these things are, and we just automatically think as, as humans, as, as eukaryotic organisms. We're gonna use oxygen, and there's a lot of oxygen up there, right, twenty percent of the atmosphere is oxygen.
It's enough.
But, not all environments have oxygen, not all organisms use oxygen, so I use those words, a- and, and I, you know, we talked about. With the use of O two, uh, and what are we? What would you, what, what are we in all those categories? We're arrows, but we have to, we have to have. Obligate arrow, by the way, you see the word obligated, it means you're, you're obligated to do whatever it says. Or you could also use the word strict arrow, we have to have oxygen, so. Obligate arrows. Such as us. Some bacteria. Now, I, I, I put us, but really what I'm thinking of is. We're, uh, eukaryotic organisms, that just means us, but, you know, just. But obligate arrows, what's that mean, what, what does that word mean, means.
Have to.
We have to.
Obligated to do so.
Now, we can skip this a little bit, let's just go down here, let's use the opposite here. Obligate anaerobes, they're actually killed by oxygen, they actually, oxygen kills them. It's a toxic substance for them. Some bacteria. Now, there, there are other ones in between though. See, technically, the way I would have done it, I would have said, okay, let's take possible, let's take a bunch of various anaerobes. And I'd say, okay, there's the obligate anaerobes, there's the micro anaerophiles.
There was something called inter.
And the facultative anaerobes, remember? Which I could have put under the other category.
I don't remember that, actually.
Hang on, I'm just gonna tell you though, real quickly. So these fit into that cate- category, and then, this would be the anaerobe category. Let me just write them all up, because that's why I'm about anaerobes, obligate anaerobes, and the anaerobes.
That means they can handle it, but they don't like it?
No, but, well, what it means is, it doesn't bother, they don't use it, but it doesn't bother. So they don't. Don't. Use O two, but it doesn't bother. Whereas the obligate anaerobes, they're killed by. And again, some bacteria are in this category. Micro anaerophiles, these aren't a real big deal for our purposes, they, they, they use O two. In, in, you know, the lower amounts in, in the air, the air is between twenty, twenty-one percent, they might not want it to be like fourteen percent or something. Use O two in lower percentages, percentage. Some bacteria. And the facultative anaerobes, they use O two if it's available. But ferment. If no O two. This is some bacteria. Actually, some, some eukaryotic organisms. For example, yeasts. Remember the yeasts, we use yeast for our fermentation experiments. But if you, if they're around in a box, it, you know, respire, cause they get a lot more energy. But in the conditions of making bread or whatever, they, you know, you run out of O two pretty fast. So then they, then they ferment. Now, what's the big deal there? Where, where I want you to see, now, should you know all these, you should know all of these, yes. And in particular, where I want you to think about is, first of all, where are we, one of the five categories?
We're the obligated arrows.
Obligated arrow, strict arrow, we have to have oxygen. Uh, what about bacteria, there are bacteria in every single.
Yeah.
No one bacterium is gonna be in all these categories, don't think that, you know, you're, each, each particular bacterium is in one category. But my point is that, that every single possible category you come up with, there's some bacteria there. And, and what would be the advantage, what would be the advantage of being an obligated arrow, like us?
Uh, you release the oxygen.
You, you get a lot of, well, no, you get a lot, using oxygen, you get a lot of energy, you, by using it, right, by using energy, oxygen.
It's more efficient.
Process, a lot of energy available to you, so that's, it's a good thing. What's the other advantage, where, where do we live here?
On Earth, where it's.
We've got a lot of oxygen in the atmosphere if you're living at the surface of the Earth. So that would be an advantage. What would be a disadvantage? What if you wanted to go to some place like, oh, we're down in the ocean, ah, you're not gonna do too well down there, are you? So there are environments where there's not very much oxygen. So this is a nice thing to be if you are in the surface of the Earth. What if you aren't on the surface of the Earth, then it'd be, that would be something else, huh? And that's, that's a point I want you to realize, is that on Earth are all kinds of different habitats. And, you know, the bacteria that are there, you know, they're, 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 or they're organisms, whatever, you know, are, are, it works for them, but it may not work for some other organisms. So, um, let's take something, well, look at the facultative anaerobes. What about those guys? Those guys have the best of both worlds.
I know, I was kinda thinking that, like, wow, you run out of.
I mean, that's pretty cool, because, hey, hey, there's oxygen, let's use it, oh, we fell down into a, you know, uh, into some mud. Oh, it doesn't matter, we'll just ferment, you know what I'm saying, they, they, doesn't matter which environment they're in, they could, they could be whatever environment's the best. So what if they're in an environment where they're a lot of obligated arrows, and they're being outcompeted by these guys? Well, maybe if they're in a slightly different environment where these guys aren't, they're not, they don't have that much competition. So if you think about it in terms of competition and all that, you, you, you know, you, 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 we are competing against other obligated arrows, we will not compete against all these other guys. You know what I'm saying? Or if you're, if you're an obligated anaerobe, you're in some place like mud or underneath the ocean or whatever, you, you're only competing against bugs that are down there, you're not competing against any of them. Do you have any good questions? Does that make sense, so Tazlin, does that help as far as?
No, um, well, I, I still don't get what was part we have to know.
Well, I, so I want you to realize that there, there are several different categories of, where you could use O two. Why one might be advantageous over another, I mean, why is this a good thing, and maybe a bad thing, why is this a good thing and maybe a bad thing? And think about it in terms of where it might be, you know, obviously, if you're an obligated anaerobe, it would not be a good thing to live on the surface of this Earth, right? But there are places on Earth where it would be a good thing, and there wouldn't be any obligated anaerobes there, you know. You know what I'm saying, does that make sense? Yeah.
When you say ferment, what do you mean by ferment?
Well, that's where you're using, breaking down sugar partially, and you're not breaking down all the way, so you don't get a little bit of two ATP. But most, most of the processes where they're not using oxygen, well, I don't wanna say that, that wouldn't be quite accurate, but in general, most of these other processes are fermentation processes. There are some other processes other than that.
In that statement, it sounds like you're using oxygen to, in the fermentation process, but if it's not available, it can still do it anyway. That's what the statement.
Yeah, no, 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 i- if O two is available, oh, I'm sorry, use O two is available, and that, and then that's.
But you, you know what I mean?
You respire. I say respire, but what that means is cellular.
Respiration, yeah.
Using mitochondria. If you have those guys, you know what I'm saying?
The, yeah.
Anthony, can you talk there for me, don't leave.
Probably not, just.
Don't go, I wanna hear your people, yeah, anyway, but does that make sense, just, just, ferment is just, there are some processes other than, there, there isn't such a thing as anaerobic respiration, which. People think is by common sense and they're wrong, and, and the people who do those are some of these guys, but don't worry about it, it's not for us. Yeah.
What is the, um, endosymbiosis?
Oh, endosymbiosis, endosymbiotic theory.
That's, I was, I mean, they weren't gonna go over that, but it's just like where we think that they started working together to.
Poop, poop.
The, the, the little pro, prokaryotic cells that.
Mitochondria.
Well, that one consumed the other, didn't eat it, and they worked together.
Yeah, so, the, the term symbiosis, I, you know, I never really officially gave you this term, and I should have. But when you're talking about two organisms in a symbiotic relationship, that means they're both helping each other, they're both feeling something to be good for each other. Sometimes you'll see the word commensal, it's another thing, it's sometimes cooperative, you see those kinds of words. As opposed to a parasitic relationship, where one guy is gaining and the other guy is being hurt, you know, that's a parasitic relationship, largely, potentially, you know that.
Mm-hmm.
So anyway, um, but, but, uh, yeah, I'm not getting into that. But, but the idea of that endosymbiosis is, is for the origin of, of endo symbiosis. By symbiogenesis, for the origin of mitochondria. And chloroplasts. And the idea was that, when they, well, this was more like in the nineteen sixties and seventies, and they started studying mitochondria, and they realized, and they realized that mitochondria. And blue greens have their own DNA, they have their own ribosomes, they have their, and you, how do you get new mitochondria, they grow and divide, grow and divide. And you're going, wait, these are little organelles inside your cells, and yet, they're acting like bacteria. In fact, their little chromosome is like a bacterial chromosome, and their little ribosome are like bacterial ribosomes. They're growing, dividing like bacteria, and like, what, 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 what's the dealer, same thing for chloroplasts and, and cell, and plant cells. And then, so people started studying them and studying the, uh, 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 you know, the enzymatic reactions and, I mean, the actual enzymes that are being used and all that. And they go, you know, what it looks like is that way back when, we're talking, um, two, two, over two billion, three, almost three billion years ago. Some big cell, maybe, engulfed a little aerobic bacteria. This is after blue greens had been formed, so there was oxygen available, and engulfed some blue, some, some, so some cell engulfed an aerobic bacteria. Instead of eating it and killing it, somehow they formed this nice relationship where, where this, this big fermenting cell said, hey, I'll give you some pyruvic acid, and you give me some ATP. You know what I'm sort of saying? And so eventually, over time, they, they, they made this nice symbiotic relationship. Where the mitochondria now have to be inside your cell, and your cell has to have them, you know, we can't, we can take them out and they'll survive for a little while, but, you know, they can't just do anything on their own. Totally. So, and the same thing for chloroplasts, I think it was some blue green that was engulfed. So the idea, so let me say it again, so the idea is that the origin of mitochondria was maybe at one time, a free-living aerobic bacteria. That got engulfed by another cell, but didn't get killed by it, stayed in there and set up this nice relationship, where they need each other now. And the, and the, that, some cells that had only begun that, engulfed some blue green. Does that make sense?
Hmm.
Does that help you on that? I, uh. So, yeah, I'm sorry.
He said they used to be their own.
So, so originally, so, so the mitochondria, uh, originally, this is what they think, originally, a free-living. Aerobic bacteria. And there are aerobic bacteria. There's one in particular that's very similar. So originally, a free-living bacteria, that was engulfed by some of the cell, and then they set up this nice cooperative symbiotic relationship. And the same thing to the chloroplast, originally.
Moving.
Free-living. Moving. Is that, is that okay on that, does that make sense?
And that was where the whole.
Were you, were you there in that lecture, do you remember? Okay, anyway, but, but is it, one real quick thing, just real quick, and then just, just to make, make it sink in a little better. This is true for both blue, blue greens, I mean, for chloroplasts and mitochondria, but they have, they're double membrane, remember, these are membrane-bound organelles, they're actually two membranes.
Mm, so.
What they think is, okay, so here was, you know, here's the, the original cell, and here's the mitochondria in say. Right, I mean, I mean, the original, that'd be the original aerobic bacteria, people say this thing was the original bacteria. What happened is this cell, um, I'm gonna do a black here. Started to surround it, to, to kind of engulf it. Like this. And, and eventually, it, it just edged itself, edged off. Like that.
And it has two membranes.
And then, and so now we have this. So there's, and eventually became a mitochondria with, with those two membranes. Does that make sense, anyway, that's, that's the idea.
And.
Tazlin.
Um, um, I was, we, his question is probably related.
I'm sorry, say it again.
His question is probably related.
Oh, go ahead, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, say.
I, I was just gonna say, so the chloro, the, the free-living blue green was probably the mechanism for photosynthesis, cause.
Yeah, yeah, and, and that became chloroplast.
And that's the origin of a plant cell?
Yes, a plant, yeah, so the plant, so a plant cell presumably, it was some cell that are already engulfed the mitochondria, because they have mitochondria. And then it came, came along and engulfed a blue green, and those, those changed.
So what I'm asking, what I'm asking is the one would be like the start of an animal cell, the other one would be start of a plant cell?
Both animal cells and plant cells presumably started this one.
Oh, okay.
And then one of these, then engulfed the blue green.
And.
Become chloroplast.
And then it was a full-on plant cell, yeah, yeah, okay.
Or the least of precursors.
Plants, okay, that, okay.
Um, do you have to know about, um, polyphleidy and.
No.
Haha, we're, haha, yeah.
No, no, let me, no, 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 stop, stop, take it back.
Uh-oh.
The previous statement is, is now inoperable, um, no, that's not true, yes, you do, uh, and I'll tell you, I'll even give you a big. Yeah. I think I asked you about some difference in the numbers of chromosomes.
There's somewhere in here, I remember, and I can find it.
Yeah, do you know about, oh, I'm sorry, take it back, know what polyphleid and anaphylid means? And I think I asked you a question dealing with sex chromosomes.
Yeah, in sex in the beginning, where's that all where I know?
So polyphleid just means, well, not for this way, anaphylid. Usually the word polyphleid, so actually, polyphleid usually means that you have like a whole new set of chromosomes. But anaphylid means that they're, they're not quite the right number, like, something's wrong, like you have an X one or you're missing one. Yeah, yeah, so, 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 so polyphleid, I don't think I asked you that, let's be, be careful, but anaphylid, so you don't have the right number. So like Down syndrome, what's the deal in Down syndrome?
You have three twenty-ones.
Anaphylid. Twenty what? One extra, number twenty, number twenty-three, is it?
Twenty-four, twenty-one.
Uh, number twenty-one, I think.
It's an extra four.
Huh? No, 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 but one extra number twenty-one chromosome.
Uh, number three.
Yes.
Isn't there like three?
So, so the person would have, the person would have forty-seven chromosomes.
Anaphylid is still a new set of chromosomes, it's just the wrong number.
Yeah, yeah, but it could be this extra, extra, or, or, or more, or less, extra, or, or fewer, right? They say one extra, or one less. So this is an example of extra, one extra.
And that is Down syndrome.
And this is Down syndrome.
Yeah. But it could have less than, than.
What was the example of, of, of ones in, in the sex chromosomes?
Oh, those, uh, weird diseases.
Yeah, there you go.
Um.
There was, there's one, there's the XO, there's the X. Uh, there was the XX, there's even, there's even the XXY.
Wasn't there the super female or?
Yeah, this Turner's. I didn't give you very much information, I just said a little bit about it.
Well, that's all we need, I'm, okay, whatever, what you're gonna put on the, on the exam, that's what we're concerned.
So, so, so Tazlin, your question, it, it has something to do with these right here. But hint, 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 something about any of these.
And polyphleid means having several extra.
It's been like, it usually means like a whole extra set, so you, instead of having two, maybe three in, you know.
Oh.
You might have one whole set, extra, extra set.
So twenty-four chromosomes.
So instead of, so instead of forty-six, you'd have forty-six plus another twenty-three, so it's sixty-nine chromosomes.
Oh, hard, wow.
Well, but it's not, you, you know, you're not gonna survive as a, as a, as a.
As an organism if that happens.
But maybe a plant or a reptile might be able to do that and survive, you know, but, but not, don't, don't, don't worry, birds and mammals, they're not gonna survive.
Okay.
It just, it's, it just messes up everything.
It's just semblable.
Yeah. Yeah, it's okay. What, go.
Okay, okay, so, in what way are the archaea different from bacteria in the eukaryotes?
Oh, yeah, it's a good question, and guess what, I won't ask, I won't answer that, okay, I'm, I'm glad you asked it, cause I won't ask it. The archaea and the bacteria, you know, we called them bacteria until recently, until the last several years, they just have, the ribosome RNA is more like, it's different, listen, it's different, there's some other things different, so, yeah, don't worry about it.
But you will ask the extremophiles question.
I'm not gonna say anything about extremophiles, those are fascinating bugs, but I won't ask them.
I, I kinda like those.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, the next one is, well, punctuated equilibrium.
Ask me a question, what's yours gonna be about?
I was gonna ask you, before you're gonna ask about deletion inversion.
I won't ask about deletion inversion, those are all ways. I know, because I thought it'd be you two to know about it.
No.
Now that you're asking.
Just like no additional information, only the facts.
Those are useful things to know, let me ask, let me, I, I wanna cover punctuated equilibrium, but let me just get your question, see if where they fit in first. Anthony, you had your hand up.
Oh, yeah, well, I was just saying, is there some, you know, thing in the study guide, they're not gonna be on there.
So far, there's a lot.
But remember, I said look at those main topics, and I have a, a paragraph in the study guide, and the main topic will be one of those sentences. And I'm making a question on that one sentence, and the rest of paragraphs you can kind of just skim over. Don't just forget it, cause there might be something neat from it, but, but mostly it'll be that main topic. Ashley. Yes.
Is it all short answer?
No, no, let me, let me, gotta write out some stuff, this is more like the first exam right here, this is not like, right, I'm taking my physio class.
Is there fill-in?
No.
Okay, I'll sit.
I'm taking my physio class, you're gonna be writing along, Anthony, but this one's like a little short.
How does a loud exam work, so far, great?
Fifty points, so, out of five hundred, so it sounds like about ten.
Yeah, there, she already put up the result, I, I hear the Thursday.
Do you have a bunch of questions about like?
She put, are they up?
Yeah. Well, I think so, she, she put Tuesdays up.
What did I ask about that, I asked about, I'm trying to, what was, what was the, um, plants, plants?
Did you struggle?
What was the main topic I told you on plants, did you have the main topic?
The main topic.
Isn't this where you have main topics?
I made a video.
Ah, listen to that carefully.
Then you also have questions about lichens.
Okay, lichens, okay, so I did it, and so those are both hint, hint, hint on the test.
Okay, good.
So, so let's read, so, and then I'm gonna do punctuated equilibrium, so.
All right.
Okay, so, so pay attention now, this is the hint, hint, hint section.
All right, all right, cause this is.
Main topic section, the main topics, I told you that, that's gonna be the majority of the test, so one is a question about lichens, and what's the deal with lichens?
Yeah.
There are compound organisms, compound organisms.
There are blue green in a fungi. There were.
And then the other question was about.
Lichenthrops? That's a, they're called lichenthrops?
It was meat.
I hate the word lichen.
So now we're gonna do a question about punctuated equilibrium.
Wait, what, plants have sperm and eggs meat?
How, how sperm and egg meat?
And the fungi cook.
I, I'm gonna get there, I'll just try and put these topics up, so I can say something about them. It's on the main topics, so. So. Composite organism, I mean, this means it's made of two totally different kinds of organisms, and they're not even closely related. So what is this, that you're fungi? Plus algae. I saw the fungus and an alga, I think.
Yeah.
Plural fungi and algae, plural, uh or or fungi. Plus blue green. The majority of the fun.
Fungus way, yeah.
The majority of of the lichens are the first, I guess, and like ninety percent I said, ten percent are the fungi and blue greens. Okay, so what's the deal here, what? So there are composite organisms, so what what? But here's what I want you to think of, what advantage does that give these guys?
Take your photos and size.
Well, well, yeah, but let's take a big example, I mean, you you, and then that's the thing, you know, we're gonna get back to the photosynthesis, but the bigger idea is that. What, you know, what's the deal, we're talking about organic evolution and. Everyone's struggling to to exist, right, there's a lot of competition for existence. And what if you can get into some environment that not been anybody else can, you're gonna and you can exploit that environment. You're gonna have a survival advantage, right? So what's the deal about lichens, they can live sometimes on really inhospitable environments for most organisms, like on rocks or. You know, on a on a on a surface of of trees or something like that, places that you wouldn't think of that would be terribly nutritious. I mean, like a rock, it's not very nutritious, is it? So, but but why why can a lichen live in a rock and that's okay, because the fungus can stick to the rock. And it can it can it can have a a, you know, kind of like a a bed for the algae to live in. And it can it can hold them there, it can absorb moisture from the air, it can provide minerals and stuff like that, what do algae do?
It's good for us.
Photosynthesize, it can provide uh food for itself and the extra food it will give the fungus. So the algae is getting a nice safe place to live, I mean, most algae have to be in some kind of liquid environment, you know. A river or lake or whatever, but hey, these algae can can live outside of the river and the lake and the stream and everything because. They're in association with the fungus, it gives them a nice little home with the moisture it needs and. Being exposed to the sun and all that.
Which one provides, what what uh which one provides? The forms photosynthesis.
Blue greens all perform photosynthesis and give off a blue juice, algae, same thing. They're not green, have you ever seen a green fungus, well, yeah, you can see green fungi. It's not photosynthesizing green. Penicillium mold is green fungus, anyway. So does that make sense, so you understand the idea of why it's advantageous to. For these organisms to do this, what I'm trying to say is they can live in environments that aren't necessarily terribly hospitable for most. Organisms and yet they can do fine, and so they've got this nice kind of private little place to live.
They they do better because of the symbiotic relationship.
Because of their relationship, yes, it's nice, nice and bad. What about plants, there are four different kinds of plants we talked about.
That's what I need to know.
To the more modern, right, what we think of is that.
I know it's on the video.
The bryophytes and the and it's the the non vascular, then the conifers, the.
Conifers.
And and then the um. I mean, they're called gemnosperms and then the angiosperms. What was the deal with those first two, the the bryophytes and the things like the the vascular. Seedless vascular plants. They're they're like ferns are examples, seedless vascular, those first two categories, they need water to for the sperm to reach the eggs. And so you know, you think back on it, where did the things originate, they originated in in the oceans and the rivers and the, you know. And so you say, oh, that makes some sense that the more primitive, if I can use that word, organisms, plants. The the more primitive type still use the water for the eggs to. Uh for the sperm to meet the eggs, but what about with the conifers? You know, they they the the they give off the the pollen, the wind blows it around, blows it around. If it gets into um, you know, the pine cone where the eggs are, I mean, the the the. It's the sperm in the in the pollen, if it gets into the pine cones, then it can fertilize, so they don't need water anymore. What about, what about flowering plants? The birds and the bees, right? But birds and mammals, they 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 pass the pollen along.
What are the flowering plants called?
Angiosperms. Yeah, and then the other, the animal will then carry the pollen, or and and sometimes the animal will transport the seeds so they can go to other places and all that. So what I want you to see, it's it's, i- if you look at animals too, the same kind of thing, you know, you can see some of the ones where you. You know, the like the like take the vertebrates, the fishes and the reptile, I mean fishes and amphibians, they need water. Even though the amphibians have come on the land, they still have to go back to the water for their eggs. But birds and and reptiles and mammals, you know, they don't need water anymore, birds and reptiles lay eggs. What about mammals? One type still lays eggs, doesn't it, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Two types, two.
Well, one one, I I just said one type. Two two, there are two examples of it. And then and then they have pouch mammals and then the placentals, like like doggies and people. Okay, what about this punctuated equilibrium?
Oh, I I was just gonna say, could you, could you list the four types of plants that there are?
Oh, oh, God, you want me to look right down?
Well, I have conifers, it was endovascular, angiosperms.
Is that you see?
Yeah.
The seedless. Seedless vascular, no, the seedless vascular plants.
Seedless vascular, that's what it is.
And then the gymnosperms or the conifers, mostly conifers. And then the uh angios-term. But these are the, you know, kind of in order of what we think of from more from from primitive to more.
It was just a question, I think, I said, what are the four types of plants, and I just wanted to know.
Asking about how do those sperm and eggs need?
Oh, by water, I have.
Yeah, yeah, cause I just want you to realize there is this change and it's it it and. It's a change over time because the bryophytes are the oldest, they've been around the longest, angios-term has been around the least long, you know, and so there's. So so the first two, these first two need water for the sperm to meet the eggs.
Conifers use air.
Gymnos-term just air, you know, with going the thing, and then angios-term is usually something like insect or bird or something that's. Bees, you know.
Some organisms, so it's either by air, by water, by organism.
But some organism is 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 actually transporting. Let me tell you about the punctuated equilibrium, there was a question on punctuated equilibrium. Because it's a it's a fairly relatively new theory, I say relatively. And and here's the deal, where I want you to understand about that, punctuated equilibrium is, you know, when they when. People, you know, every year they find more and more fossils and they're filling in more details, but still, you know, there's a lot of details to be. Continually until then, but when you look at the fossil record, whether it's the development of a horse or. You know, modern humans or whatever, that's really bad for what organism. In most, most of these uh fossil histories, it'll look like. Whatever the organism is, it stays a very much the same for a long period of time, and then suddenly it seems to change. Now again, I use those words like suddenly, geologically, we're not talking in our own modern existence type word. Uh and so when you're talking about suddenly in geo- geology, you might be talking about, you know, two hundred thousand years or something as opposed to. Two million years versus a billion years, I mean, you know, we're talking. Still long periods of times compared to human existence, you know, and how long you live on earth, but but. So you have to be careful in using those words, but the point is, you look at over time. You have some organism, whether it's a horse or whatever, stays pretty much the same for a long period of time, then suddenly there's a change in its appearance. And then that might stay stay that same way for a long period of time, then suddenly there's a change. And the way the way, you know, it was described by the one person who came up with this theory, uh one of the two people who developed it, you know, it's it's. The warfare, remember I mentioned this to you? What is what war is is this, you know, extended periods of boredom. Punctuated by short periods of intense terror, I can tell, well, that seems what happens in in the fossil record. Long periods of time where the organism is the same, punctuated by these little short bursts where the organism changes rapidly. So here's the basic idea of common problems, here you have some big general population, main population. When we're talking about a population, it's an interbreeding population, so these, all the organisms in this population are interbreeding. And the environment's staying pretty much the same for a long period of time, they're all interbreeding, so they're all pretty much staying the same, this environment isn't changing much, there's not a lot.
And they all flourish in that.
Wipe out some and select others, but. There are some 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 members that were, they were members of this population, but they're kind of on the outskirts here. Why outskirts and not outskirts, I don't know, anyway, uh but so these are some populations that are kind of on the edge. You know, separated for whatever reason, it could be there's several ways they could be separated, but they're just sort of separated. But they're maybe exposed to slightly different environment, each of these might be a slight, each one may be a different environment from each other and from the main population. So there may be some change going on here, say we'll say some change here, some different change, some old change over here, but different, whatever it might be. Same thing over there. And this on the periphery, okay? Then suddenly some something happens where there's a huge environmental change. Big environmental change. And maybe one of these orgi- maybe the organisms down here are better adapted for the big or that this big change is occurring. In the main population. So 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 we have a new change in now a new change in environment, which now favors favors these guys. Say, then these guys start to come in and they start to take over, they start, they start out competing all the main members of the main population. Maybe interbreeding also with the main population, but they start out competing and and uh so pretty much in a short period of time. Relatively speaking, um their successful genes will will replace a lot of the other the genes in the main population. And so now if you look in the fossil record, you say, oh, my God, it was the same for, you know, five hundred thousand years and seventy hundred thousand years or ten thousand years is a big change. Well, of course, there was things happening over here, but you know, you don't get fossil-ing, fossilizing, getting finding a fossil is a rare thing. You know, if you have a big population, you'll get several of those that might be in the right place to become fossilized, whereas a few small population. Lucky to find one of these that might happen to be in the right place to be fossilized, once they take over, then you have a whole bunch of the ones that took over. Might become fossilized when you see them, does that sort of make sense? So saying saying again, big population, not much happening in the big population, interbreeding, but change is going on in these. We use the word island, in these islands, then some beach, so we're getting some changes. Some big change occurs in a in the environment favoring these, and they can take over that new population, because they're very successful.
So it'd be like to say, long periods of stasis, punctuated.
Stasis, which means staying the same.
It's punctuated by 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 drastic change.
Short bursts of change.
Oh, yeah, okay, short bursts of change, okay.
And when they first saw this, they go, how could this happen, well, then when when these people came up with the idea of punctuated equilibrium, well, those. Makes sense.
Yeah, cause all these things we found frozen in the ice that suddenly just wiped out, yeah. These ones had more fur.
But you but you, so does that make sense? Any others, any other questions?
Um, yeah.
Not gonna ask about that. Pretty interesting stuff, so. Nothing about the Cambrian explosion, but that is when the all these multicellular organisms just started to flower, if I can use that. Yes, Steve.
I mean, I, just so you know, I have one, two, three, four, five questions left.
Let's do them, let's do them.
Okay, one was the the. The greatly forward idea in development of modern humans.
But we did that with respect to the vocal vocal.
Is that what that was?
That's what they think.
Okay, okay. Did we do the use of O two by bacteria and other organisms?
Yeah, we did that, that was that's over here.
Oh, okay. And then we have lichens, we have sperm, oh, yeah, three different types of mammals.
Yeah, the last one.
Yeah, the last one, the egg laying mammals, the pouch mammals and the placentals. So I just want you to, you know, I mean, I think it's, I remember the first time I I when I, the first time I realized. Or found out that there were egg laying mammals, I'm going, whoa, really?
Yeah, me too.
This is great that they they are, they lay eggs, but yet they they make milk and then babies.
Pouch and placentals. So we don't, we can say a laying, we don't, or in pouch, we don't have to say marsupial or whatever.
Pouch pouch or marsupial, I don't care which.
Okay, and egg laying is fine?
Yeah. You might you might know an example of each, this is kind of cool. Any others?
Um, I'm gonna look through, but I think I thought just about everything.
Of course, email me if you have questions. Write up, write up answers and say, does this make sense?
I think uh. I think we're good, I mean, does anybody else have questions? We we covered it all, alright. The video will be up sometime tonight. Uh huh, no problem. Hey, it's it's, like I said, it was sort of an experiment. I I said I said I'm doing it for free, what do you want? Alright, um, wow, this is the point where I really have to find the mouse, because otherwise I can't turn this off. Um, where's that mouse? Did you see what happened to my mouse? Oh, there it is, good, cause now I can turn off this thing. Okay, folks, we're done for the semester, study hard, this doesn't sound like it's gonna be rocket science, you can all do it. Um, if anybody wants to leave comments, let me know if this actually helped you and whether or not I should do it again in the future class, please feel free to do so. Um, then everybody have a great year, or summer.